Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the Glasgow City Council. Would you please stand and join me as we have our pledge to the flag?
Pledge of the flag. United States of America, in the name of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing. Councilman Kirkpatrick will lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for today. Lord, I ask you to guide us with wisdom and discernment as we face the responsibilities and challenges as city officials. Give us all a spirit of cooperation and unity to lead with kindness, and, Lord, also let us be attentive to the wants and needs of our citizens that we serve. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, and be seated. Let's, first of all, do the roll call, and Clerk Cashin will do the roll call of our members in attendance.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Trigg?
Yes.
Norris?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Neal?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Benel?
Present.
Burris?
Here.
Lowry?
Here.
All right, everybody's here. Thank you all for being here, and we've got lots to take care of tonight. On Thursday of last week, you were emailed the agenda for tonight's meeting, prospective agenda. First things first, we need to entertain a motion to adopt this agenda as the agenda whereby we operate tonight.
Mayor Ross, I move that we amend tonight's agenda to add one item.
Okay. Councilman Benel?
Tonight I move that we add the one item, that is, the first reading of an ordinance amending the city's annual budget for the year 2024-2025 as it relates to the federal grant monies for the airport totaling $690,751.74. I'm told by our treasurer that it's possible we need to do at least a have a first reading before the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, so we will. When we get to that part on the agenda, we will include what you're amending with the part that's on the agenda. I gotta have a second on that.
Second, Lowry.
Okay. Is there any discussion about this particular change in the agenda? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. So we have adopted the agenda for tonight, and the first item on that agenda is to approve the minutes of the meeting we had on June the ninth. I will entertain a motion. You had those in your packet, and you've had a chance to look over the minutes. I will entertain a motion to pass those into the record.
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilman Neal. Is there any discussion on those agenda or other than the items that were presented in the minutes? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. It will enter the minutes of the June the ninth meeting into the permanent record here at City Hall. All right, we've got several items of old business to deal with here, and Rich, you want to talk about some of our municipal orders, sir?
Yes, sir. The first item is municipal order reappointing Joey Botts to the Bayonne County Economic Authority as a city representative. This appointment is for a four-year term expiring June 30, 2029.
All right, you've heard the municipal order to reappoint Joey Botts. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Benel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Neal, and is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Next item is an order reappointing Randy Gibbons to the Glasgow Board of Adjustments. This is a four-year term expiring June 30, 2029.
All right, you've heard the municipal order to appoint Randy Gibbons to the Board of Adjustments. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
From Councilman Norris, is there a second?
Kirkpatrick.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order passes.
Next item is municipal order reappointing Thomas Grubbs to the Board of Adjustments, again, a four-year term expiring June 30, 2029.
All right, this is an order reappointing Thomas Grubbs to the Board of Adjustments. I'll entertain a motion that we do so.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is that Tommy?
First.
Okay, Tommy Burris, second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order carries.
Next item is a municipal order reappointing Sue Mutter to the Bayonne River Area Development District Aging Council. This appointment is for a two-year term expiring June 30, 2027.
All right, this is an order appointing Sue Mutter, actually reappointing Sue, to the Brad Aging Council. I will consider a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order is approved.
Next item is municipal order reappointing Sarah Young to the Glasgow-Bayonne County Tourist and Convention Commission as a lodging representative. This is a three-year term expiring June 30, 2028.
All right, you have heard the municipal order presented. Is there a motion that we approve it?
Motion.
From Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second, Benel.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Municipal order is approved.
Next item is a municipal order reappointing Tim Gooden to the Historic Preservation Commission. This appointment is for a two-year term expiring June 30, 2027.
All right, you've heard the particular municipal order read. I will entertain a motion that we approve it at tonight's meeting.
Motion, Norris.
Okay, is there a second?
Kirkpatrick.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Order is approved.
Next item is municipal order reappointing Thomas Grubbs to the Historic Preservation Commission. This is a two-year appointment expiring June 30, 2027.
All right, you've heard the order to put Mr. Thomas Grubbs back on the Historic Preservation Commission. I'll entertain a motion to do just that.
Motion, Benel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, from Councilman Neal, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Next item is an order reappointing Randy Gibbons to the Glasgow Board of Adjustments. This is a four-year term expiring June 30, 2029.
All right, you've heard the municipal order to appoint Randy Gibbons to the Board of Adjustments. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
From Councilman Norris, is there a second?
Kirkpatrick.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order passes.
Next item is municipal order reappointing Thomas Grubbs to the Board of Adjustments, again, a four-year term expiring June 30, 2029.
All right, this is an order reappointing Thomas Grubbs to the Board of Adjustments. I'll entertain a motion that we do so.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is that Tommy?
First.
Okay, Tommy Burris, second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. All right, the order is approved.
Next item is another municipal order reappointing Candy Wethington to the Glasgow Board of Adjustments, a four-year term expiring June 30, 2029.
You've heard the order presented, and you have seen that in your packet. I'll entertain a motion that we approve Candy Wethington to the Board of Adjustments.
Motion, Benel.
Is there a second?
Second, Lowry.
Okay, is there any discussion on this appointment? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order carries.
Next item is a municipal order reappointing Sue Mutter to the Bayonne River Area Development District Aging Council. This appointment is for a two-year term expiring June 30, 2027.
All right, this is an order appointing Sue Mutter, actually reappointing Sue, to the Brad Aging Council. I will consider a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order is approved.
Next item is municipal order reappointing Sarah Young to the Glasgow-Bayonne County Tourist and Convention Commission as a lodging representative. This is a three-year term expiring June 30, 2028.
All right, you have heard the municipal order presented. Is there a motion that we approve it?
Motion.
From Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second, Benel.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Municipal order is approved.
Next item is a municipal order reappointing Tim Gooden to the Historic Preservation Commission. This appointment is for a two-year term expiring June 30, 2027.
All right, you've heard the particular municipal order read. I will entertain a motion that we approve it at tonight's meeting.
Motion, Norris.
Okay, is there a second?
Kirkpatrick.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Order is approved.
Next item is municipal order reappointing Thomas Grubbs to the Historic Preservation Commission. This is a two-year appointment expiring June 30, 2027.
All right, you've heard the order to put Mr. Thomas Grubbs back on the Historic Preservation Commission. I'll entertain a motion to do just that.
Motion, Benel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, from Councilman Neal, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order passes.
Next item is a municipal order appointing Beth Hinkley to the Tax Appeals Board for the PVA. This appointment is a three-year term expiring June 30, 2028.
Okay, you've heard the order to appoint Beth Hinkley to the Tax Appeals Board, and I will accept a motion to approve that.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second, Burris.
Okay, any discussion on this appointment? There being none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. The order is approved.
Next item, mayor, is the second reading of a budget amendment for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 regarding the Glasgow Airport Board. Be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow that the annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 is amended as follows. Section 1, there is hereby received into the unappropriated general fund the sum of $271,907.49 into the administrative miscellaneous revenue account for the Glasgow Airport grants. Section 2, there is hereby transferred from the unappropriated general fund that same amount to the miscellaneous expense account for the Glasgow Airport reimbursement of grant. Section 3, there is hereby received into the unappropriated general fund $2,000 into the general fund police department account, other revenues for donations. Section 4, there is hereby transferred from the unappropriated general fund $9,200 into the general fund police department technical equipment account for a bit defender. Section 5, there is hereby transferred from the unappropriated general fund $1 million using the administrative landfill sanitation landfill transfer to refer to return funds from previous transfer. Section 6, there is hereby transferred to the unappropriated sanitation landfill fund $1 million to the landfill general fund transfer to move funds back from the previous transfer. Section 7, there is hereby transferred from the unappropriated sanitation landfill fund $87,900, of which $45,000 is moved into the landfill maintenance and repair account, and $42,900 moved into the landfill equipment parts account. Section 8, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Do we want to vote separately on this one and the amendment?
Yes, sir. There's one other amendment.
Okay, okay.
We can take that one up after this.
Okay, all right. So you've heard the second reading of this amendment amending the budget for the last fiscal year, and I will first of all entertain a motion that we approve this amendment.
Motion, Benel.
Is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, I'll ask Clerk Cashin to call the roll.
Neal?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Lowry?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Yes.
Benel?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
That's all yeses.
Okay, we have all yeses. Thank you very much. The ordinance is approved.
The next item, mayor, is the added agenda item. It's related to the airport as well. This is a first reading on an ordinance amending the city's annual budget for 2024-2025 to receive $690,751.74 for the airport. Be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow that its annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 is amended as follows. Section 1, there is hereby received into the unappropriated general fund the sum of $690,751.74 into the administrative miscellaneous revenue account for Glasgow Airport grants. Section 2, there is hereby transferred from the unappropriated general fund $690,751.74 to the miscellaneous expense account for Glasgow Airport reimbursement of grant. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you've heard the first reading of this ordinance that was added to the amended agenda. I will entertain a motion that we approve this amended item.
Motion, Benel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. The amended agenda item has passed on first reading. It will require a second reading.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, okay.
Next item is the second reading of the ordinance adopting the city's annual budget for the new year, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, establishing revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the City Council, and whereas the City Council has reviewed such budget proposal and made necessary modifications, now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows, section 1, that the annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2025 and ending June 30, 2026 is hereby adopted as follows. And I read at first reading all of the different accounts, but for purposes of the second reading, I will just go down to the bottom and read the estimated year-end balances. That's sufficient for a second reading. So the estimated carryover from June 2025 totals $21,272,292. The estimated revenues for the new fiscal year 2025 through 2026, the year-end balances are estimated at $34,015,233. The estimated expenses for the new fiscal year 2025-2026 is totaling $33,616,286, and therefore the 2025-2026 estimated carryover will be $21,671,239. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect as of July 1, 2025, according to passage and publication required by law. A copy of this information, the entire budget, proposed budget, and background information are available for public inspection at City Hall during normal working hours.
Okay, you have heard. This is now the second reading of our budget for the coming fiscal year. I will entertain a motion that we approve the second reading of the budget.
Motion, Benel.
Is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Is there any discussion? I'll conduct a voice vote, I'm sorry, a roll call vote.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Lowry?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Benel?
Yes.
It's unanimous. The budget is passed. Thank you all very much for your, this is a very, very large living document that everybody on this council has had lots of opportunity to study and to read and to make decisions on, and I appreciate your time because it is a very important part of what we do here. Let's move to new business. Rich?
Next item is a ordinance amending the City of Glasgow's Code of Ordinances, section 31.21, as it relates to the compensation of the mayor, and section 32.01, as it relates to the compensation of members of the City Council, and authorizing cost of living adjustments for the mayor and members of the City Council pursuant to KRS 83.075. But before I read the ordinance, allow me to give you all some background information, which I think will be helpful and explain the purpose of the proposed amendment. By state law, the compensation of the mayor and members of the City Council can only be changed by ordinance no later than the first Monday in the year the elected official is elected, and the compensation of the elected official cannot be changed after the election and during his or her term of office. While you could pass an ordinance now that changes the compensation of the mayor or City Council members, it would not take effect until January of the year following the next election for the office of mayor or City Council. So typically, most cities will wait until the election year to change the compensation of the office of mayor or the City Council. An example would be, we just had an election last November for our City Council members. In order to change the compensation of the City Council members, that would have had to have been done no later than May 6 of 2024, and if changed, it would have taken effect January 1, 2025, and it would have to stay that way for the next two years, the term of office for the council members. Same goes for the office of mayor. The next election for the office of mayor is November 2026. Therefore, just like with the City Council members, to change the mayor's compensation, that would have to be done no later than May 4, 2026, and if it were changed, it would only take effect January 1, 2027, and it would stay that way for the next four years, which is the term of office for the mayor. However, state law also provides that while the compensation of the mayor and City Council members cannot be changed, except as I've just mentioned, there is a method for adjusting the compensation of these elected officials during their terms of office to reflect the fluctuation in cost of living, and that can be done each year so long as the cost of living adjustments are within the limits established by the Department of Local Government each year. So this proposed amendment to the city's Code of Ordinances reflects the current state law on compensation for elected officials, and it makes clear that the cost of living adjustments are permitted during terms of office so long as they are within the parameters established by the Department of Local Government and subject to budgetary limitations are approved by the City Council as part of its budgeting process each year. So just a little background as to the purposes and the reason for this amendment. So here's the first reading of the ordinance. Be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow that its Code of Ordinances, section 31.21, as it relates to the compensation of the mayor, and section 32.01, as it relates to the compensation of the members of the council, shall be and hereby are amended as follows. Any words being added are indicated by a solid line drawn underneath them, and any words being deleted are indicated by a solid line drawn through them. So section 31.21 relating to the mayor, the entire subsection F is deleted, and a new section F is added that says, pursuant to KRS 81A.070, the City Council shall by ordinance fix the compensation of the mayor no later than the first Monday in May in the year the mayor is elected. The mayor's compensation shall not be changed after his or her election or during his or her term of office. And then section 32.01, as it relates to the members of the council, the compensation section E is deleted in its entirety, and a new section is added which says, pursuant to KRS 83A.070, the City Council shall by ordinance fix the compensation of the members of the City Council no later than the first Monday in May in the year the City Council members are elected. The City Council members' compensation shall not be changed after their election or during their terms of office. Be it further ordained by the City of Glasgow that pursuant to KRS 83A.075, the city reserves the right, subject to budgetary limitations, to adjust the compensation of the mayor and the members of the City Council as part of the annual budgeting process in an amount up to, but not above, the percentage set by the Department of Local Government's annual letter setting the maximum cost of living adjustment percentage allowable for each year. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Okay, thank you, Rich, for reading the first reading of this particular ordinance. I will first of all entertain a motion so we can get it up on the floor to approve the first reading of this particular ordinance.
Motion, Benel.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Neal. All right, let's talk about discussion. Is there discussion on this? I thought Rich did a good job of explaining it, but I'm sure there might be other questions.
Rich, I got three questions. Have we ever did the cost of living allowance increase for either of the two? When was the last time we did it for either of the two, and do we know what that percentage will be?
I can tell you, just from conversations with Lance Primmens, I can't answer, I don't know the exact time when it was last done, but I believe, according to what he told me, the annual salary right now with adjustments is, for council members, is $8,614.56, and he said that it was, he thought it was last changed sometime around 2016. With respect to the mayor, the current salary is $67,644.20, and the last time that it was done was sometime around 2016 as well, but I don't know exactly what the percentages are, so.
Do they use the same percentages that the federal government or state government use for cost of living increases? Is that what, the way I'm reading it?
I don't know that for certain, Mr. Trigg. I do know that there is a letter that they're required by February of each year to put out that outlines the, what is allowed, and it, I mean, odds are it won't ever go down, but it can potentially go up or down, but that letter is put out by the Department of Local Government each February.
You have any clue, is it like one and a half percent? I know that because of the teacher retirement, but is that, are we in the ballpark, is one and a half or five percent or?
There you might, yeah, I'm not.
This year, the Department of Local Government declared that the cost of living adjustment is 2.9%. That's what it is based on, this is a very complex calculation that the state goes through a lot of figures, and the agreement was it's 2.9%.
And did I read this correctly, or did it change? That if we were to vote on it today and the next time, does it go into effect until the next election? Is that for the councils? So we're not really talking about giving ourselves a raise, correct?
Correct. And when I say compensate, you gotta, there's a difference between what I call COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment, and compensation. So you could give yourself, this doesn't automatically do it, but as part of the budgeting process, the council could approve the COLA adjustments from year to year, but the base compensation cannot be changed for the council or the mayor, except as I talked about, May prior to the election year. So like the figures that I just gave you that I received from Lance, those have included cost of living over the years. This is not the base salaries. Does that make sense?
I guess, I'll try to simplify it. What I'm voting on is nothing that's going to increase my salary, which I'm not gonna vote, no, I can just tell you, if it's somebody two years from now that's on here, and whether I'm here or not, that's fine, I don't mind that, but I don't want to be the person sitting here voting myself a raise.
You're not voting yourself a raise, sir.
So, Rich, it sounds like we've already been getting a cost of living allowance since 2016 every year, so that.
This is just, this is just.
Just codifying the fact that we've been getting it. So Randy, to our, to your point, we've already been getting it every year. They've been doing it, we just didn't have it in writing. We just didn't have it in writing. So he's.
And I don't, I don't know for sure, Mr. Trig, whether or not every year the COLA was granted, but apparently there has been, you know, at least since 2016, but.
Right.
And I will say this, every year, the Department of Local Government gives out figures of the maximum compensation that a council person or a mayor can receive. And it's, it's a lot more than what in this city that those are given out, but I've just seen those come across the desk. But I'd like to sometime study how they come up with that, what all the things that factor into that, but it's kind of like all over the place.
That was one of my questions. Is that all across the board or is that population? How is that?
I'm not real sure, Ms. Kirkpatrick. I'm not sure how that works.
Well, it's.
I would say, I'm sorry, I would say that for instance, a city of the first class like Louisville or Lexington, it would probably be higher than cities of the second or third class.
It's, you know, it's a, I guess it's just a ceiling put on. I don't know if anybody, you know, ever goes up to that ceiling or not. I'm sure there are some, but I guess DLG does it just to keep away from any kind of confusion. All right, good discussion. Is there other discussion?
I think that this, with this ordinance, it does clarify what we're trying to do as far as compensation for the mayor and the council members. I mean, it cleans it up. It gives us a percentage that we go back to. It's not just left up to a random draw or a random number because you're using the Department of Local Government, you're using the cost of living adjustment. And none of us are voting for a pay increase for ourselves because you can't do it because we're already our council members and already a mayor. So it's for people that's coming after us, whether it may or may not be some of us, who knows? But you're putting it in a place where it's better defined, it's better to be calculated, it'll help us in the budgeting process. So it's a very positive step to put this in a box now, and we need to put it in a box. So there is no, I don't know what we're doing, what do we do with this? Now we know it's based on the Department of Local Government, we know it's a cost of living adjustment, and there's not a take a coin, flip your coin, see what happens.
And it clears it up. Rich did a good job. Rich spent a lot of time talking with the Kentucky League of Cities Lawyers to make sure that we finally get this ordinance in there in a, in a way that can be understood.
Department of Local Government, give me, that is, is that a body that we are, is that through KLC or is it?
It's not, it's not through KLC.
But they make the recommendation on what the mayor makes, what the percentage should be for the council?
But yeah, they set the, they set the param, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk over. They set the parameters for that. And then the Department of Local Government also is an agency that, for instance, if the city enters into an interlocal agreement with a county or what, they have to review those interlocal agreements and make sure that they're, they meet the statute. So they're kind of an oversight, if you will.
They review audits too.
Yeah, they review the audits and anything financial.
The Department of Local Government is not going to let you go out on a tangent here. We're not going to see a, propose a 10% pay increase for the mayor or council members. I mean, I mean, they're very attuned of what happening in the cities and where budgets and operations of cities. And the Department of Local Government is a very good function of state government, which obviously flows down to us at the local level, so.
All right, any other discussion? I will call the question on first reading of this particular ordinance. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Did, you voted no?
Yep.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure we get you in the record there, sir. All right, but the motion does pass on first reading. Now let's go to the second page here, Rich, this joint resolution.
This is a joint resolution of the City of Glasgow and Barron County amending an interlocal agreement by, by and between these two units of local government to clarify the collection of fees and assign responsibility for costs of a permit software. That whereas on July 1, 2023 pursuant to the City of Glasgow Resolution Number 2023-2576, excuse me, and Barron County Kentucky Resolution Number 2023-6-29, an amended interlocal agreement was entered into by and between the two units of local government as it relates to the services of Barron County Kentucky's Building Inspector. Whereas the Glasgow and Barron County have once again agreed upon an amendment to the Building Inspector Agreement to clarify the collection of fees and to assign responsibility for the cost of the permit software, now therefore in light of the foregoing recitals, be it hereby resolved that the July 1, 2023 Building Inspector Interlocal Agreement shall be and hereby is amended as follows. One, Paragraph 3 of the July 1, 2023 Agreement is amended to read as follows. That as long as this agreement remains in place, the City of Glasgow will use the same inspection fee schedule used by the Fiscal Court of Barron County. The Fiscal Court of Barron County will retain 70% of said building, electrical and HVAC inspection fees from inspections performed within the Glasgow city limits and will submit payment of 30% of the Glasgow, of the billing, electrical and HVAC inspection fees from inspections performed within the City of Glasgow limits to the City of Glasgow. Two, the July 1, 2023 Building Inspector Interlocal Agreement is amended and a new Paragraph 4 is added which reads that the City of Glasgow shall furnish the cloud permit software used by the Barron County Building Inspector's Office to download documents, file permits, pays for permits, and act as an online portal. Three, except as amended hereby, all other terms and conditions of the July 1, 2023 Building Inspector Interlocal Agreement shall be and hereby are ratified, excuse me, reaffirmed and still in full force and effect. A specimen copy of the July 1, 2023 Building Inspector Interlocal Agreement as amended by this resolution is attached here too as Exhibit A. Four, the mayor of the City of Glasgow and the County Judge Executive of Barron County are hereby authorized to execute this amended interlocal agreement attached as Exhibit A.
All right, you have heard the reading of the resolution. I will first of all entertain a motion that we approve the first reading of this joint resolution.
Motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, now we'll open it up for discussion. Are there questions about this particular interlocal agreement or other things about this that we need to know about?
Who comes up with the 70/30? How did it split like that?
That is the way that we have divided up the Building Inspector with the planning and zoning. And part of it has to do with the cost of the, cost of the software and the way that we divide the responsibilities, plus the population of the people that it serves. So it's kind of like a 70/30. Kevin, you're sitting over there. Kevin is actually, who can probably explain that 70/30 a little bit better. Do you want to do that? I thought you were hiding back there.
Just to clarify, that's your, your building department. While I'm in with their office, it's separate from mine. However, the, the fee that was negotiated there, you do have to take into consideration that there's not an employee that the city is paying for. So this interlocal agreement is met with the county who has taken on all employee salaries and benefits and, and health benefits. So you're getting the services of them without them actually being an employee of the City of Glasgow and taking on all of that extra stuff that you would, you would have, okay? Once again, population difference, the amount of calls and services that take place there also factored into that, that agreement cycle as well.
All right.
And Mayor, just a point of clarification, just it's really, the majority of this is a housekeeping. The language in the 2023 agreement said that the city collected it and paid the county the 70% and we kept the 30. That really wasn't what was happening. The county was doing the collecting and giving us the 30. So this amendment just, just cleans up the language to, to reflect what's actually taking place.
And also to add on to that, I know the Building Inspector's Office has recently just received expanded jurisdiction to be able to do state electrical and HVAC jobs. So all of that is local. So any, any construction outside of a, a school or a medical facility can be done locally without having to go to the state, except for plumbing. So they've taken on all of that type of issues that come along with that too, so that it, it all falls on the county at that point.
These things that you're talking about make us a much more friendly place to come and.
Efficient.
Much more efficient.
Yeah.
Much easier to start a business, to get ready to build a house, things of that nature. And the investment in this software is certainly a really smart thing to do as well.
Yeah, they do have the software in place and it's, it's been, it's been working that way, but as Mr. Alexander explained, the way that it was wrote, it was, it was not adequately reflecting what was actually transpiring between the two entities, the city and the county.
All right, good explanation. Any other questions about this or discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. This resolution passes on first reading.
Next item is a resolution for the City of Glasgow to make application for a grant administered by the Department of Local Government for assistance under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act of 1965. This is for the Glasgow Recreation Department. That whereas the City of Glasgow proposes to resurface the pavement and install new lighting at Weldon Park and develop, and to develop Phase 2 of the Aquatic Center at American Legion Park. And whereas the City of Glasgow intends to make application with the Department for Local Government for grant assistance under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act of 65. And whereas the Land and Water Conservation Fund is limited to funding a maximum of 50% of the proposed project costs and the city is required to match the other 50%. And whereas the total project costs are estimated at $655,350, making the grant $327,675 and the city providing a match of the same amount. Now therefore be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow as follows. One, the City of Glasgow through its grant writer, April Russell, shall make application with the Department for Local Government for grant assistance under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act of 1965 for the Glasgow Recreation Department and for the purposes set forth above. Two, the City of Glasgow shall hold in reserve the sum of $327,675, which represents its 50% match should the grant be received. Three, Mayor Royce is hereby authorized and directed to execute on the city's behalf any and all documents necessary in order to apply for the grant and if awarded, to complete the grant process. Four, in the event a grant is awarded, the City of Glasgow understands that it will sign assurances to comply with all applicable federal and state laws, rules and regulations, especially Title 6 of the Civil Rights Act and Section 504 of the 1973 Rehabilitation Act adopted today's date.
All right, you've heard the first reading of the resolution for us to make the application for this grant. There's your, Randy, your Department of Local Government showing up there in a chance for a grant. I will first of all indicate or entertain a motion to approve first reading of this particular resolution.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second, Benil.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Resolution passes on first reading.
Last item is a resolution authorizing and directing April Russell, Director of the Office of Grant Oversight, to apply for a grant from the Kentucky Department of Agricultural Animal Control Advisory Board for a spay and neuter grant. Be it hereby resolved by the city that April Russell, Director of the Grant Oversight Office, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on the city's behalf with the Department of Agricultural Animal Control Advisory Board for a grant in the amount of $1,266 to fund the Barron River Animal Welfare Association. This is a matching grant and if received, the city will match at $1,266. Be it further resolved by the City of Glasgow that Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to execute all documents necessary to apply for this grant.
All right, you've heard the reading of the resolution authorizing Ms. Russell to apply for this grant. I will first of all entertain a motion that we put it up on the floor for discussion.
Motion.
From Councilman Neil, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I don't know who was, was that you? Okay, all right. Okay, that was from Councilman Kirkpatrick. All right, any discussion about this one? There being none, I'll call the question. All in favor of passage of this first reading of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Resolution is approved. Under the topic of announcements, I've got a couple of cancellations to share with you. First of all, this time tomorrow night, we're supposed to be in the middle of a concert right out here in front of City Hall. But the National Weather Service and the physicians in the community band and many others are saying it's going to be way too dangerous to be sitting outside under a heat advisory to conduct the concert tomorrow night. So the concert on the square to be conducted by the Glasgow Community Band has been postponed for tomorrow night. They're anxiously waiting for the fall to have another chance at getting this. And if you've paid attention to the community band, they're growing, they have excellent, excellent participation, they sound great, and more and more people are involved. So pass that along because I know a lot of people were looking forward to being down here for the concert on the square. There's another really important meeting that was scheduled for this coming week that has been postponed, and I'm going to call Kevin back up to the podium. This is Kevin Myatt, who is the main man for the, for the Planning and Zoning Department. Let's talk about your cancellation.
Yes, sir. So we were going to have the Small Lot Housing Initiative and Qualified Manufactured Home Public Meeting tomorrow night. We're going to postpone that to July 10th. That is a Thursday from 6:00 to 7:30 here in the council chambers. We would really invite you all to come out. This is just picking up those regulations that the state has put on there that Mr. Alexander explained to you all a few meetings back. Some of the state laws have changed and we need to address those in our zoning ordinance while also having the discussion on our housing need here, here in Glasgow and how we can maximize some small lots that maybe are falling below the threshold of building lots. It's, it's an important and vital information meeting, and it's one that you all may have to actually address. There's some, some gray language in the state statute with regards to qualified manufactured homes, certain words that are used that are called compatible. We don't know what that compatible means and we need some direction. And when I say we, as the planning commission who's going to rewrite that portion of the zoning ordinance, we need to make that as clear and concise to the, to the individuals here in Glasgow and in our county that we have it laid out and they know exactly what to expect when they come into our office if they want to build or bring one of those, those homes into the city limits. So it's a threshold that you all need to look at and, and Mr. Alexander's got full information on it as well. My office is always open if you want to come by and, and talk with us. But July 10th, Thursday, 6:00 to 7:30 here in the council chambers, Glasgow City Hall.
All right, thank you, Kevin, for explaining that. I think it should be a very interesting meeting and we're all going to be interested in learning kind of where we're going with that.
What, what happens July 1, I mean?
So that state law goes into effect and we'll have to abide by it because the state law specifically says that no zoning code or zoning law or city ordinance can discriminate against qualified manufactured homes. It's deemed void and nonenforceable by the state statute. So it's in play, okay, at that point.
It can happen before then.
It can happen.
Without anything written up in the meetings.
Yeah.
I mean, probably won't happen.
I wouldn't anticipate it happening, but I mean, it certainly can apply for a building permit and at that point it's permitted. You know, there's some things that still play if there's, if there's design guidelines, meaning maybe HOA requirements or something like that with, with regards to how large a home is or how much, what the facade is. Those are still in play. So those, those will cancel out some of the areas that these could be located in unless they met that threshold. So July 1 is, is when it does take into effect and we'll just operate until we can get something wrote that we'll, that we'll speak to it.
All right, thank you, Kevin, appreciate that. And we'll get more information and reminders out so that everybody has a chance to be here for that. That takes care of our cancellations. Let's talk about what's coming up. April, you want to come up here and talk about Entertaining Glasgow back in business on Friday night for another wonderful Entertaining Glasgow event at Beaver Creek Park?
Sure. Friday night, we're going to open up at 5 o'clock with, at Beaver Creek Park with food trucks. So we want you to bring your chairs and your blankets out. The music will start with Justin Cole at 6 o'clock, which notice the time difference. That's an hour earlier than what most of our concerts start at. This is our Christian genre concert. And then at 7 o'clock or maybe 7:15, Cochran and Company will start. It'll be a really nice family evening. It's a free concert, just bring money for food at the food trucks, a blanket and a chair and enjoy with us.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it. If you haven't been to an event out at the recently upgraded and improved Beaver Trail, the pavilion out there, it's a fabulous place to watch a concert, to have dinner, to hang out with the family, plenty of room to enjoy. So we look forward to seeing everybody out there on Friday. Couple more things here. Glasgow, we're brewing up. Couple more things here, Glasgow, we're brewing up something brand new and super cool. The very first ever Cars and Coffee Event is this coming Saturday, June the twenty-eighth, eight o'clock on the downtown Glasgow Square. Come fuel your morning with hot coffee and cool cars. Meet fellow enthusiasts and enjoy the perfect mix of horsepower and caffeine. Whether you're a gearhead, a casual admirer, or just in it for the coffee and community vibes, there's something for everyone. Bring your ride, your friends and your love for great conversations and shiny machines. Please note the south and east sides of the square will be closed for this event, so plan your parking accordingly. And, uh, we learned this past weekend about how much people love their cars and the talking and being downtown, and this is going to be a wonderful event as well. Then coming up here on the eighth day of July, seven thirty PM, the much anticipated, uh, world-class Louisville Orchestra going to be in downtown Glasgow for July the eighth. Bring your lawn chairs, your love for music, your sense of wonder as the orchestra fills the summer air with iconic classics and bold, exciting new works. It's a one-of-a-kind evening you won't want to miss, perfect for families, date nights and anybody who enjoys the beauty of live music under the open sky. I was on the phone this week with the Louisville Orchestra folks and I can tell you that, uh, they are just so excited that something that this community has done to the Louisville Orchestra, they love coming to Glasgow. As long as they get to come to Glasgow, then they have had a great season and they just like talking about it. So let's show them a good time on July the eighth. City Hall will be closed on Friday, July the fourth, uh, and all city departments will be closed as well. The next regular meeting's Monday, the fourteenth of July. It'll probably be hot then too at six PM. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Motion.
Okay, a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, thank you all so much for being here. And our, our cows from the nine-one-one dispatch center, Beverly, Beverly would be a good school principal because she never has anybody that skips out on coming to the council meeting and we thank you all for being here. Thank you.